Anyone wishing to speak on a matter not listed on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on with introductions of the committee members and staff. I'm the Chair, Mary Kolar. To my left is Supervisor Jerry Bullock, Supervisor Dennis Loughlin, Supervisor Almatano, Supervisor Patrick Miles will likely join us in a little bit. Also present is our Youth Governance Member, Sam Fisher. For staff here this evening, Zoning Administrator Roger Lane, Assistant Zoning Administrator Dan Iverson, and Director of Planning and Development Todd Vialante. So just go over the rules quick. The Committee will be conducting a public hearing on zoning petitions and conditional use permit applications. Any persons wishing to speak in favor or in opposition must fill out a white registration form. As you can see, the gentleman over there right now is filling out one of those forms if you would like to speak. When a petition is called, the petitioner will be asked to come to this table up here and have a seat and address the committee members. You just address the committee members. We ask that the petitioner state their name, address, the petition request, and reasons for the request. The petitioner will be given up to five minutes to address the committee. The order of the registrants is as follows: after the petitioner or agent on any other person's wishing to speak in favor, then persons wishing to speak in opposition. All speakers will be given five minutes to speak. If there is opposition, the petitioner or agent will be given an opportunity at the end of the public hearing to provide a rebuttal to the opposition. The petitioner will be given an additional three minutes. All speakers will again address the committee and not individuals in the audience. There will be no running debate. The Committee will not take action on a petition until the applicable town has filed a report with the zoning division. The deadline for the town to submit action report to the county is Thursday prior to this meeting. Public testimony will be taken at this meeting. However, if town action has not been received, a decision will be made at a subsequent meeting. If there is a public opposition on a petition, the petition will be postponed until the next meeting of the committee. This will give the petitioner, opposition, and staff an opportunity to work out matters between parties. If the town's action has been submitted and there is no opposition to a petition, the committee may act on the petition and refer the petition to the full county board. If the committee passes petition unanimously, your presence at the county board may not be necessary. However, if the petition is controversial, it is advised that you do attend the county board meeting. Committee action on a conditional use permit is the final action of the county. These applications are not referred to the county board. The petitions which are recommended for approval will be placed on the August 12th county board agenda. The next ZLR committee meeting is on October 10th. Okay, our first petition is Petition 11,180, a rezone from JDC Properties in the Town of Christiana.
My name is Jim Casey from JDC Properties. Location is 263 Rodney Road, Section 1, Town of Christiana. The change from C2 Commercial District to C2 Commercial District, modification to existing deed restrictions.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I'm Donna Casey.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Christiana has approved this petition. They approved it with conditions. They would like to deep restrict the uses to manufacturing for engraving operations, manufacturing of small automotive parts, and diagnostic tools, offices for these businesses, and a display area. Staff is also suggesting, given the fact that this fronts on 1218, that a deed restriction be placed on the property prohibiting the installation of off-premise advertising signs or billboards.
And I should also say, also Justin Spalding, is it? Registered in support. Supervisor Bullock?
Yes, so you're focused in agreement with all the conditions as you've just heard? Then I'll make a motion to approve with the town and staff conditions. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Next is rezone petition 11,181, Sandra Hansen in the Town of Albion.
Hi, my name is Jason Carandonte, and I'm representing Sandra Hansen at 1200 Washington Road in the Town of Albion. Change from A1 EX Agricultural District to A2 Agricultural District, shifting property lines between adjacent landowners.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Albion has approved this petition with no conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is rezone petition 11,182, David W. Smithback in the Town of Pleasant Springs.
Yes, hi, my name is Chris Miller. I'm representing David Smithback for property just south of 2449 Center Avenue in the Town of Pleasant Springs. We would like to change from A1 Exclusive to A2 Agricultural District, and A1 Exclusive District to A4 Agricultural District to create one residential building lot.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Pleasant Springs has approved this petition with conditions. Shall I go through them? The remainder of the A1 Exclusive property to be prohibited to further residential development. Housing density rights on this portion of the original farm have been exhausted. An agricultural access easement shall be recorded on the A2 parcel to allow access to the fields to the east. And then site plan approval shall be granted from the town board prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the residents on the A2 zoned lot because it's fairly large.
Supervisor Loughlin?
You okay with that? Okay, I'm going to move approval with the condition placed by the town. And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with town conditions discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. We have on our desk here, table, the next petition. Do we have anyone signed in for John Glick, Mazo Mani?
I got here a little late.
Okay, did you get a chance to fill out the form? Okay, you will.
Okay.
Please, have a seat. You are John Glick?
Glick, yes.
Okay. And we'll have you fill out a form. If you'd just tell us who you are and what, just briefly describe your petition.
Well, my name is John Glick. I've come to for rezoning from RH2 Rural Home to A4 Agricultural. And it's south of 10434 Laws Drive. It's Mazo Mani.
Anything else you'd like to tell us?
That's all.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
At your table tonight, we do have the town action report from the Town of Mazo Mani. The Town of Mazo Mani has approved this with no conditions. However, it has arrived yesterday.
So if we are to act, it would require a motion first to suspend our rules to accept the town action.
Suspend the rules to allow action in a second?
On the motion to suspend the rules, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we are suspending our rules to take this rezone. Supervisor Loughlin has a question.
I...
Oh, Supervisor Miles has a question.
So for Roger, in the staff report, you state that since the property owner has no intention of, basically this rezone is because he has no intention of developing the property, but wants to retain the right, the development right?
That's correct.
You have stated in here that we should require deed restriction or deed notice?
A deed notice. A deed notice would be fine, just so that we could document that there is a housing density right, just in case in the future that you would want to turn it back to residential.
All right, so I'll move with the condition that deed notice be placed, documenting the intention of the property.
I applied for the zoning density, but that was about a month ago. I haven't heard anything back from this period.
Okay, I'm going to have to talk with the planners because you do have a housing density right there. I know that, yes. And so that deed notice will be there. It's a fairly... It was created with a housing density right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with the condition discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Okay. With that condition, it'd work with staff to get that resolved. Thank you. Okay, next rezone petition 11,184, Loffenberg Revocable Trust in the Town of Medina.
I am Joyce Napton, and I am here representing my dad, Anthony P. Loffenberg. And the address is 5516 Box Elder Road in the Town of Medina. We are changing, we're requesting a change from A1 Exclusive to A2 Parent 4, to do some estate planning and to eventually sell the parcel with the house on it to a family member.
Anything else you'd like to add? No? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The Town of Medina has approved this petition with conditions. They would like the animal unit restriction applied to this property, and also they would like a restriction on the property that the A2 parent to parcel cannot be further divided.
You okay with that?
That's fine.
I'm going to move approval with those conditions. I'll second.
Is that what, the restrictions via deed restriction, Roger?
Roger?
Yes, I am.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Excuse me. Yes, that would be with the restrictions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. Further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, next on our agenda is rezone petition 11,185, Scott Wilson in the Town of Dunn.
Scott Wilson is unable to make this. This petition corrects a rezoning in 1989. Mr. Wilson agreed to rezone his property back to rural homes once the woodworking business on this property ceased. The woodworking business has ceased, and he's fulfilling his obligation to rezone it back to RH2. The Town of Dunn has approved this petition with no conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Thank you. Rezone petition 11,186, Kenneth Paris in the Town of Berth.
My name is actually Mark Bursaw with A1 Landscaping. When I had applied for the permit with Roger, he had put Ken Paris's name on it because he was the owner of the property when we had applied for it. We have since purchased it. So what do you need to know? I'm new with this. Bear with me.
You asked for the petition to, we have, to change from RH2 Rural Homes District to A2 for Agricultural District.
Correct, correct.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, this is my wife Chrissy. We, I, we own and operate A1 Landscaping. We're a small, very small, Christian-based landscaping business in Sun Prairie. Very seasonal, not much in the wintertime goes on. I'm requesting the CUP. I just, I just need some guidance in this because this is, this is not what I do. I do brick patios and fire pits. I'm not used to, you know, doing this. Talked to Roger Lane and great length about this, and he thought it was a good fit for the area. And correct me if I'm wrong on that, Roger. Some businesses and zoning were the same that were in close proximity. When I say I have my business, let me clarify, it's basically a place to park my trucks and store a bit of unused materials outside, and just a house to hang my hat in. I rent a place now. I've had Beerenkot surveying, look at the property, and basically mark off a proposed CUP lot in the middle of the existing lot, a little less than an acre total, give or take, of about five acres total. I've drawn up the proposed area, have the scale drawings that Beerenkot has. I'm sure you probably got copies of that, or I can get them for you as well. I'm not in the retail landscaping business. I'm not getting bulk deliveries. I'm not running trucks up and down the driveway on a regular basis. I don't plan to have anyone on-site. We do all our work off-site unless I'm doing it for her, and then I don't get paid for it, right? There's other businesses like apple orchards, car repair, daycare, that have people on-site all day long. I'm not, I'm not that type of business. We start at 7:30 in the morning on days it doesn't rain, and work till about 4:00, 5:00 o'clock, and then, and then we're done. In the winter months, like I said earlier, we're, no one's there. My wife and I went before the Town of Berth Plan Commission in July, about a week or so before our official closing date on the property. We went through the six conditional uses, and it was unanimous that we fit into the overall plan. I'm willing to work with the town and the county to be sure that we stay within the parameters set forth. The next meeting we went to was with the neighbors, and there's some neighbors here in opposition tonight, and they'll paint a, they'll paint a little bit different picture. I sat there in amazement as the neighbor lady painted an untrue picture of what I am and who I am. There's a bunch of my neighbors back here I've never even said hi to, and they don't, they've never knocked on my door, and that's, I don't know. We knew their concerns going in, and we've, we've addressed each of them. I too have those concerns because I have to live here. I'm not renting the house out and running a business out back. I'm not doing the old bait and switch. I live on the premises too. There was a bunch of concerns that were raised, that I'd run over the child, increased traffic on Thorson Road, but I don't know if anybody's been on Thorson Road lately. It's a pretty slow-moving street.
Very.
Very slow-moving street. It's just, no one lives, you know, there's two ends to it, and the only people that drive on it live there.
If you want to focus on the petition?
Mm-hmm.
Because you have been given three minutes after the opposition's.
Okay, so I'm petitioning just to be able to have, have my business there, and they've got, you know, pictures and cellphone video, and he had a drone out the other night, you know, taking the video of me washing my truck in my driveway. I mean, that's, that's borderline stalking, right? I don't know. Maybe it's, you know, there was concerns about property values decreasing. With the petition, I plan on parking my trucks inside. I've taken their concerns into account with, with Beerenkot surveying, and we put everything on the opposite side of the building that, that they can see from, from their house. There are two really long, deep lots, side by side, and, you know, the buildings are closer together. So we put up a roll of trees, we put 29-plus big arborvitas in to kind of block the view and be friendly neighbors. And honestly, the rudeness of the neighbor lady is just what, what gets me.
Okay.
I love, I love my neighbors. I love my neighbors, you know?
Okay. And again, I encourage you to stick to the petition and address the committee. So you're Mark. Alexis, did you want to add anything?
Alicia.
Alicia?
Yeah, we've never had any issues with anybody ever with our landscaping company. We have never, there's never been any garbage in my yard. There's never been any large equipment that has sat and leaked oil in my yard. I have children too. We went from a very busy road, Bailey Road in Sun Prairie, which is extremely busy, to almost nonexistent traffic. There's no danger of us running over anybody's child. There's no danger of us leaking oil all over the place, no more than anybody else. It's a clean place. It will remain a clean place. The landscaping that will be done on the property will be done by a professional landscaper, which at our other property, we almost, we almost doubled our property value just from landscaping alone. There is going to be nothing but beauty at this place. There's not going to be any excess noise. Again, we'll be coming in and leaving.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, if you would give up your chairs for a little bit. Also wishing to speak in support, Pam Venega?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you'll have a chance for me. You wanted to speak in support of the petition?
Yes, I just wanted to come and speak. I didn't go to the first meeting because I thought it would be pretty simple, and then it kind of, we ended up here. I am their Realtor. I have known Mark and Chrissy actually for almost 20 years, and we spent the last five years really looking at properties. And I've known their intent, what they were looking for. All we were looking for was a house that was a nice house for them, but also an outbuilding that they could store his five trucks. That's always what it was, just to store his trucks. We weren't looking for other outbuildings to store product. There's going to be no pallets, there's not going to, not going to be piles of mulch, there's not going to be piles of rocks. It's just for his five trucks. So I just didn't think that we would be here. So, you know, in the morning, and I've known him, I've known him for almost 20 years, and his, his business has stayed the same. It's him, his wife, he has seasonal people that help him, you know, when, when you're busy in the summer and you've got a big mulch job, I'm sure, you know, there might be a couple guys that he has come and do that. But the trucks going out, he's going to have a couple trucks in the morning that are going to go, and a couple trucks that are going in, going to go in at the end of the day. Kind of like when you have that big barn and people, let people keep their boats in there, and they grab it on a Saturday morning, and they take it to the lake, and they bring it back. So I guess I didn't realize that we would be here. So I just wanted to, and when I wrote on this property, along with the MLS sheet, they sent us the zoning of the, of things that were already approved and conditional uses. So as I'm looking through this, I'm thinking as their Realtor, well, there, it's not going to be more commotion on their property than this. So I just didn't think that, you know, it would be difficult and that we would be here. So I just kind of wanted to come and bring some support, and also let you know that I did sell their house on Bailey Road. And I know there supposedly was a letter from another Realtor how their, their property values were going to go down, and I will assure you, their house was beautiful, and his rock walls, it was breathtaking. I sold it in a day, and it sold at a great price. And I, I will be glad to give you the pictures from when I marketed it on the MLS so that you can see, he was on two acres. There was not one pile of anything. No mulch, no rock, no boulders, no anything. And though he stores his trucks at a different facility, doesn't store all of his stuff, and he didn't have that all piled around. So I, I know without a doubt that his yard is going to be as beautiful here as it was there. So I just wanted to come and just kind of enlighten you on what our goal was for five years, was an outbuilding to store his trucks. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay? Anything else? That's it?
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Okay, wishing to speak in opposition, Abe O'Brien?
My real name is Kerry O'Brien. It's a nickname. And I live at 4949 Thorson, which is two or three houses down. The only problem I have with this is it's going to set, it seems to me that this would set precedent. Are they going to be grunting of rocks? Are they going to be, what are they, what is the intention? And the Realtor said, well, it was only on two acres. Well, now they got five, so you can spread out more and do more stuff. And they knew full well that there was a petition in the neighborhood that nobody wanted this. I mean, you just don't change a rural homestead. That's why we moved out there, is for the privacy and the quiet. And that's about it. That's what, that's about all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, also wishing to speak in opposition, Alina Walsh?
Good evening. My name is Alina Walsh, and I currently live at 511 Thorson Road. We are the property that directly joins 5,009 Thorson Road, so the petitioner. There are a couple of documents, which I don't know if you have copies, but if you'd like me to provide them, I certainly can. One is the petition that was circulated around the neighborhood that Abel mentioned, and the other was the Realtor, I can certainly do that. The other was the email from the Realtor. We weren't, we didn't contact a Realtor regarding the value of their property. We asked an independent Realtor who is not involved in the sale of any home on our street, but who specializes in country homes to come give us an idea of what would happen to our property value, having a business like that next to it. And as you can see from the email, they clearly state that they believe our property value will go down because it is not desirable for people to live next to a landscaping business. The conditions that we brought forth at the meeting regarding this particular, I guess, I'm not sure if we're referencing the zoning change or the cup, so I apologize if I blend the two of those together, but with regards to the zoning change, I do have concerns about noise they have been bringing, and I do have photos, large volumes of large rocks and small rocks into the yard via dump trucks, multiple deliveries a day. And I have a 20-month-old son who is not able to nap when they're depositing large amounts of rock that are rather noisy, coming and going from the backyard. So that was one concern that we had. We also had concerns regarding the conditional use permit and whether or not this business qualified. You heard reference that they have five trucks. We know for a fact that one is a large-ton dump truck, one is an F-550, and another is an F-350, all of which I believe possibly exceed the max GAV requirement for the cup. Also, the cup has conditions around employees. We have personally seen more than one employee come and go from their property driving their vehicles, and it was not just Mr. Bursaw and his wife, it was Mr. Bursaw, another person, and two other people. So those are our concerns regarding the petition. It is the noise, the potential for loss of enjoyment to our property, and then the two conditions that we feel the cup, it does not qualify for.
Anything else?
That is all that I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Mr. and Mrs. Bursaw, you have three minutes for a rebuttal.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
In regards to Abe, I'm not a rock crusher. There's plenty of rock crushers in the area. That's, that's not what I do. I'm not changing the scope of my business. I'm actually downsizing a little bit. For crying out loud, I got my office in a bedroom. I'm not, I'm not growing a business, that's for darn sure. As far as the property values go, I saw, I talked to Nick Conrad, the person who sold them their house, talked to him last night, and his mouth just dropped open when I told him what was going on. His first words out of his mouth were, "That's a perfect place for your business. That's perfect for you, Mark. That's perfect." Pam Venega, she's one of the top agents in the, in that half of the county, let alone the whole county for start. She wouldn't have let us down that road had she not believed that. As far as the baby can't nap, I can't, you know, that's not to do with the business. We're working on some stuff on the house, some stuff on the business. I just happen to be the same guy doing it, so we're kind of crossing borders there. The employee count, I don't have any, this is, this is the gray area, and I've talked with Roger a little bit about this. I don't have any full-time, year-round employees. I've got, I've got one to two to three seasonal employees that, that work about seven months a year. They come in the morning, and they leave, and they come back at night. There's no one on-site all day long. So there's no noise being generated during, during the daytime. And if there is, that's on my property, working for her. So.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Addressing again the noise, he's not there. They get in their vehicle and they leave. There is no rock crushing. There is no product there, boulder dumping. The boulders that we just had there are for me and my yard, and he's already started placing them. We had boulders at our other yard for beauty, not for other people. So any noise that's there is because we're landscaping right now. There is no, there is no noise associated with people coming and going. associated with people coming and going, besides coming in the morning, leaving. That's it. Coming in the afternoon and leaving to go home. That's it. I can't help that the baby doesn't nap. There's nothing you can do about that. I've got two children. They're grown. I raised them both. You deal with it. There is no extra noise during the day. If he's napping at 11:00 in the morning, we're not there. I work, I'm a nurse at UW. I'm not home. He works off the property, off-site, in other people's yards. So there will be no noise associated with our home during the day. We're not there.
To back that up too, I've got a letter from, if I may speak again, just real briefly.
If you just wrap it up, you're running out of time.
Yep. Not a problem. Thank you, thank you. My current shop, I've been there over 12 years, and I walked up to the lady whose bedroom window is from that screen to that door where I parked my trucks a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago. And I said, hey, sorry about the noise over here. And just talking to her, small talk, and she goes, I don't even know. And I've got that letter, I don't even, I don't even know who you are. Kind of look on her face. I'm like, I'm the guy that, you know, parks his trucks like right here. And it doesn't bother her at all. And this is a lot closer than it is to anybody else's house. So just to kind of get some sense into it there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Roger?
The town of Burke has denied this petition. It was based on concerns regarding incompatibility of the use with the use of the neighboring properties. Also, the town plan policies show this area for residential development.
Nope. The person to your left.
Your reason? Supervisor Ballack?
Yes. Would the petitioners please come up again, please? Now, are you folks aware that the town had denied this petition?
Yeah.
The first time it was approved.
We went, we went to the plan commission and it was unanimous to proceed. And then we went to the town and I thought it was just, and this is my fault. I thought it was just a formality and I basically sat there on my hands and let them run the show.
Right, right.
And so they denied it. I'm aware of that, yes.
The town board is the controlling entity here. And their ruling prevails. And I'll let any of my colleagues correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a policy here of respecting local control.
Right.
And for that alone, I'm going to have to make a petition or make a motion to deny.
Well, there's also not, we also postponed due to opposition. So that we have two...
Well, I'll change my, I'll change my motion to give them a chance to work with the town.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion to postpone? Supervisor Alaflo, second motion to postpone due to opposition, which is one of our rules. Discussion. Supervisor Myers?
I have just a question for Roger, procedure, like how this all works. I think it's, it was described here in the report, but given that the town has taken action, we're now holding a public hearing. That starts the clock ticking. So they now have 30 days, whether or not we postponed or taken some other form of action, they can proceed to, if they wish, to file an appeal with Board of Adjustments?
Well...
Or does this...
For the first point, the conditional use permit is moot because the current zoning district is not listed as a conditional use, a limited family business. So the only matter at hand is the rezoning petition. The town has recommended denial. The next step is the, this committee take a position on it. That goes to the whole county board. And depending on what happens there, it could possibly go back to the town for a final decision. And so that's the progress.
So once the 30-day window starts, does that start, this public hearing, does it start after the final action, the county board coming in?
The, yes. The final, it could be the final action by the county board of denial. Or if this petition is amended and approved, that would be the, because it's amended agenda, it goes back to the town. And then the town has 40 days to act. If they act, that action can be appealed.
Right. So that action would be to approve or deny?
Yes. I wrote a letter to Mr. Bursaw's attorney with regards to this. The rezoning petition can be appealed to Circuit Court. So it's not a petition for an action that the Board of Adjustment will take up.
And do we have a, does one action take precedent over the other town action or postponing due to opposition?
Well, the town's action would be, I mean, it'll only go back to the town for further action if we take some action to approve with amendments.
Well, I don't anticipate us taking action to approve with amendments. We have either the town denied, which, so I, I mean, would think if we were doing anything, it would be also denied because the town did. But we do have the motion to postpone, which is per our rules when there's opposition. So I just ask, based on your experience, if there's any superseding activity.
If it would please the committee, I could write a letter to the town saying that this committee postponed action and request that the petitioner work with the town to see if they could come up with a solution to this issue. If they still feel that their action is just, the town action is just, they would put that in writing and I could bring that to this committee for, then for final action.
Because I did get the letter from the lawyer. So, you know, you've already gotten a lawyer. And...
That is just to help with the, this part of it right here, the paperwork part. This is, like I said, when I came in, I've never done this before and I don't know the proper steps. And I just wanted to get the steps done.
Yeah, this is a soothing thing.
Okay, well, if you, you hear the supervisors and staff and town and neighbors. You know, you had neighbors here tonight that just had questions. So I, I personally strongly encourage you to work with your neighbors to the best of your ability and the town. And we, for us, that is our rules that we follow. We have a petition with opposition and so we have the motion and the second to postpone due to opposition. The nonofficial is, yes, I think, you hear the encouragement to work things out with the town and your neighbors. Anybody else, yes?
I just want to make something real clear though. We have to make, we're obligated to make a decision on rezones and divisions and so forth that are consistent with the town plan. And the town, part, one of their, one of their points for rationalizing denial is that it's inconsistent with the town plan. For some reason, the land use map that you can bring it up, isn't coming up online. It's just, it's just the circle of annotations that are not the map itself. I don't know why. But regardless, so we're obligated to make a decision consistent with town plan. So I don't want to create the expectation that if this goes back to the town board and they say, well, okay, you know, maybe we'll be okay with this. Well, then they need to do a town plan amendment so that...
Right, the town's actually, yeah.
Right. But I just don't want them to have the expectation that this, you know, because that's the whole process in itself. So I just don't know, it came through.
Yeah, you're making the point, whatever society still has to be with the town plan unless they take action to.
The town plan.
Town. Town plan.
The town, town plan. So because, because this area is designated as being residential, to allow an LLC zoning or any kind of commercial entity there is not, would not be consistent with the town plan. So the town plan would need to be, which in itself is a whole nother public hearing process and so forth. So I just don't create that expectation then.
Point well made.
And all that being said, just so, I guess, at least from my point of view, to go back to the town, LLC is about a low impact of commercial use for properties you can have since the activity is primarily done with compliance for LLC. I can understand where there could be potential concerns for residential neighbors for outdoor storage of items and materials, you know, things like fertilizers or what have you, anything like that. Things that can be addressed through conditions. But it, so I guess the short of it is, some of, I think some of those concerns can be managed through conditions. And it could be made workable, from my point of view. Yeah. But, but that being said, you need to, if we had to decide now if you voted denial, because it's not consistent with town plan.
Supervisor Alaflo?
I think we should take the ball to postpone and may I have a question for petitions? This is not related to postponement.
Yes.
So just to clarify, the limited family business is holding five trucks in an existing building, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none on the motion and second to postpone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's postponed. Okay, I think the supervisor Alaflo has a question.
I just, I just want to clear up a couple of things.
Yeah.
How long have you lived at this property?
Thorson Road.
Where you are, where we're resuming?
Two months. End of July, we moved in.
Okay. And what was your understanding when you bought the property as far as being able to do this rezon?
That we just had to go through the steps and the process.
Who shared that with you?
Roger Lane did and the town plan commission and the town of Burke. When we went through with the six conditional uses that were all passed.
I don't know if Roger Lane...
There was a little more to that.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not putting words in...
He said, you need to go through the process. You need to talk to your neighbors. You need to be compliant with the county comprehensive plan. There's a little more to it than just a fishing license application.
Yeah, I'm not, Roger said I could. That's not where I'm at.
Okay, so you expected, you bought this property hoping that you would be able to go through the process of rezoning it and having a place for your equipment. Is that correct?
Correct.
And how was your Realtor involved in that? Did they say it would be okay to do or anything like that?
Would you like to ask her yourself?
She was the one that was speaking earlier.
She is.
I'll hold that.
Okay. She was, you know, optimistic about it and everything, everything fit the parameters on what you can do. And like I said, that's not what I do, you know, and she was optimistic about it. We just got to go through the steps and the process. I don't want to say I feel misled by her or misled by Roger or the town.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear from you. Those three comments, that's what I wanted to hear. Okay, then that's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to petition 11,187, Kevin Bronkhorst in the town of Cottage Grove.
Hopefully this will be a little bit easier.
Thank you.
Kevin Bronkhorst, I own property at 1858 Meadowview Lane in Cottage Grove. I would like to rezone it from R1 to R3 and make the property one lot. Over the years, there's been a road that's gone through the property in a couple of different locations. So it's been chunked up into multiple parcels. And I was advised to just, during this process, to clean it up as, to make it one parcel. And the reason for turning it into R3 is there's an existing building on the property that's only eight foot tall that I would like to raise up so that I could park a vehicle in it decent. And that's what created this.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Cottage Grove has approved this petition, conditioned upon a certified survey map being created to combine the two parcels.
And I've been working with Tim Thorson from Royal Oak. He surveyed the property already. And I don't know how that ends up in your hands or what the next step for you to get that information is.
The survey will normally submit the certified survey map application.
Okay.
So... Just remind your survey that this committee took action on your rezon.
I will. Yeah, I do have to push him along a little bit, so I will.
Yes, we need to talk to him tomorrow, submitting a certified survey map as soon as possible.
Okay.
Supervisor Ballack?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve with the conditions.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Next chair?
Yes.
On the previous item, we didn't, we didn't address the CUP. If we could.
I did hear it was muted, so, but it's on our agenda.
Well, it's still kind of in process. If the committee would vote to take, postpone or take no action, that would be...
Well, based on staff recommendation, I might move no action.
No action or postpone it? Is that true?
No action.
No action. You have no action?
It's not right.
Right. Staff recommendation was that it wasn't relevant to the zoning category. So even if we approved the zoning petition...
Very good.
It would be relevant.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to take no action on CUP 02386. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone in opposition? It's no action. Okay, next is rezon petition 11,188, Regus Company LLC in the town of Blooming Grove.
Hi, I'm Judy Underwood and I represent Regus Company. It's my siblings and I that own the Regus Company. And we own the property there. We are looking at, its address is 202 to 206 Regus Road in Blooming Grove. And we are looking at going from a M1 to a C2. The reason being is we have somebody who was interested in going to start a kennel. And obviously, we found out that even in an M1, a kennel's not zoned. Today's type of kennels are not zoned in M1s. The, to give you a kind of a view of where it is, we're looking at Highway 51 on the east side, and then it's the post office on Milwaukee Street. So we're in the back end of, we're across the street from the back end of the post office where they do the work on their trucks and stuff like that. North of us is the wetlands and Highway 30. To the east of us is a tributary to Starkweather Creek. And then just on the other side of that is Swiss Colony, which is in Madison, and it's zoned light industrial. Below us is the Madison Municipal Sewer Pump. And then they've got a, city's got a road through there, and then it's a bank, and then it's M1 below that. A reason why we're looking at putting in a kennel is, I mean, it's basically an ideal location because of the things that we have around us. You know, it's away from residents. It's not going to be, there's no offices around for distractions. We're looking at just a little, I mean, it's the smallest river of the property that we're looking at. It's going to be the kennel. And right now, we've got an auto body, or excuse me, auto maintenance company in there. And the kennel won't be moving in until the, until they're moving out. They're looking at, they're remodeling a building. So we don't have a date at all of when it would even be... don't have a date at all of when it would even be, they'd be moving out of, but we want to just be proactive on it.
Okay. Anything else?
We've had that land since, what, 1946? So, I mean, we, we own the farm, and we've developed everything on that property. So, I mean, it's, even the post office used to be our farm. So it's, it's just old family land.
Thank you. Also, registered in support is Lori Preshaw. Okay, and you're just registering in support.
I'm the CUP.
I'm the CUP. Okay, thank you.
We're both, but I am the CUP.
Oh, okay, I got you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Blooming Grove has approved the rezoning petition as well as the conditional use permit. Staff is suggesting three conditions be placed on the conditional use permit, that the conditional use permit is for the operation of a dog kennel boarding and training facility, any outdoor dog run shall be fenced, and the kennel operation shall have a weekly refuse service.
Supervisor Miles?
A question regarding a comment from the city of Madison desiring a deed restriction limiting to just kennel and pre-existing uses. Is that necessary? Or is the condition on the CUP sufficient? Because I'm just, I'm trying to understand what happens once it becomes, once a Burt dissolves, it's part of that.
I think the, the city of Madison is overly restrictive. It is being rezoned or downzoned from M1 to C2. Once it goes, once this, once the town of Blooming Grove is dissolved and this parcel is annexed into the city of Madison, they will assign zoning to that property, and, you know, if there's incompatible uses there, they'll turn it into non-conforming uses, and then as the leases go through, it will expire.
So we don't need a deed restriction.
That's correct.
On the rezon, I'll move approval to the second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rezon. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved, the rezon. CUP 02387?
I'll go ahead and move approval for the three conditions.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second with the three conditions. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved. Okay, next rezon petition 11,189, the Banks Trust in the town of Rutland.
My name is Ron Laschico. I'm here for representing Barbara Banks Trust for the property of 1546 Stark School Road in the town of Rutland. And what we are proposing is changing down zoning from C1 commercial to RH1 rural homes, and from C2 commercial to A1 agricultural, and then from M1 industrial to RH4.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Answer any questions.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Rutland has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next is rezon petition 11,190, Ruth Murphy in the town of Albion.
Hi, my name is Ruth Ann Murphy. My husband Pat and I own approximately 37 acres at 1397 Ramsey Road in Stoughton, which is town of Albion. We are proposing to separate 33.8 acres to A4 and 3.2 acres to R2 so that we can split the farmland from the home.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Albion has approved this petition with a statement that the splits have been exhausted for the property.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Supervisor Miles?
So splits are exhausted. Should we require a deed restriction?
The zoning is A-4 that prohibits any residential housing. It only permits agricultural use.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezon petition 11,191, Eileen Stats, town of Berry.
Good evening. I'm Eileen Stats. I'm here asking that we rezon a 30 acre parcel that we own in the town of Berry. Currently, A1 to two lots, A2. The 30 acres was owned by my parents-in-law, who passed away, both passed away last February. My husband and I purchased it. It's right next to our family farm, and our son wanted to also build a house on it. It currently, that 30 acre parcel had no splits associated with it, but my in-laws own 200 acres of farmland right next to it, and there were six existing splits with that. So we worked with the family to, when we purchased the 30 acres, we had one split with it that then went away from the 200 acres of farmland. We communicated with the township. They said, "Fine, send us the documents." Everything's updated with the township that that farmland, that 200 acres, which actually combined with the rest of the farmland that we own, now has one less split because it's associated with that 30 acres.
Anything else you'd like to add? Great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Berry has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is rezon petition 11,192, Lean Acres in the town of Christiana.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Cindy Permer, and I'm here, I am an agent for Lean Acres. The address is 1860 Hillside Road, town of Christiana, section 26. We would like to change from A1 EX Agricultural District to A4 Agricultural District, and A1 EX Agricultural District to A2 Agricultural District, to separate existing residents from the farmland.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
That's it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Christiana has approved this petition with no conditions. They have amended the A2-2 parcel to A-4 to note that there's no housing density rights remaining on the property.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
Anyone here for rezon petition 11,193?
Yes.
Did you fill out a form?
I did. I, yes.
I, I have some forms submitted late, so...
Yeah, there's one form with no...
Randy Larson?
Yes.
Yep.
Glad I'm the first one who screwed that up.
No, you're fine. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Randy Larson. I'm here for Marilyn Schmidt with the property at 3737 County Highway B, town of Cross Plains, and it's just a shift in property lines between the two landowners.
But you did write 2391. Is there a CUP associated with this?
No, that was our guess, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. All right, anything else?
No.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town of Cross Plains has approved this petition with no conditions.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion? Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, petition 11,194, Wisconsin Fuel, town of Pleasant Springs.
Good evening. I have some documents I'd like to pass out if possible.
Yama Drive, Fond Lake, Wisconsin. I'm here representing Paul Bardwaj with Wisconsin Fuel LLC for the project located at 2763 County Highway N. The, what we propose here is to redevelop the two parcels, create the same zoning. Currently, the gas station is zoned C1. We're going to rezon that to C2 to match the property to the south, which is an existing truck repair facility, and combine those lots to create a combined convenience store, restaurant with drive-through, fueling stations for passenger vehicles, and a truck stop. And with that, we need the CUP, which is probably next, but the CUP for the drive-through restaurant. What we're seeking here is approval of this project for the rezon and CUP without having to postpone for the wetland delineation. In the, in the staff review letter, they recommend that action on the petition be postponed until such time as the applicant completes a detailed wetland delineation by an assured delineator. What we have is, and received, is a wetland delineation from Army Corps that was completed by the DOT over a two-year period with three addendums on that wetland delineation report, which worked with the DOT for the road construction project there to delineate those wetlands. It's only two years old. The last addendum was approved in 2015. Per the wetland report, it's, the wetland variance report that we need to go to on Thursday, it stated that wetland delineation reports are accepted within a five-year window. So, since it's only two years old, our argument is that this wetland should, delineation should hold true for the site. It's my understanding that staff visited the site and had some concerns about standing water in the ditches. Roger, you have those, those pictures up, and they're also shown here in this packet, right? So before construction, we had, you know, this ditch, okay? After, during the DOT's construction, we have, you know, this ditch. They have hay bales. I was at the site before, before the meeting here. There's erosion past the hay bales, which, which had moss on it, and you can see there's thin film probably filling up the ditch. And all of this, all of this ponding that I saw was before the tree line on the project. And, and within the area, and when I say tree line, that's within this grass space that you can see on this ditch that drained the roadway. So I guess, we are asking that the wetland delineation that was completed during the DOT project be accepted as the official wetland delineation for the site. Once that happens, the project can move forward. The challenge is, is if we get an assured delineator out there, that, that second page that you see, with me being out on the site, has obviously standing water, and it has ruts through it from all the construction. You can see that. It has the hay bales in there. Is if we have a wetland delineator go out there, they're going to delineate that as wetland. And if we have that delineated as wetland, that's going to obviously cost time. It's going to be a big time issue, right? Because we're running up to the end of the growing season, which is typically November 15. DNR has indicated that they cannot guarantee that they'll issue concurrence by that time period, which then throws us into having to get an assured wetland delineator. What that means is you can get a delineation, and as soon as they delineate, it's approved because they, the DNR acknowledges that. The problem with that is, we've had multiple projects now where we've called 17 assured delineators, and they are full, and they are not taking any more work because they're, they're running against their time clock as well. So if we couple these items where, where we would get that delineated and it would happen to come up as a wetland, the owner would have, would have some serious issues. For example, the DOT is going to cut his access to N on October 23rd, okay? And, and his access needs to go to the south by that time period. So within, you know, a month here, he's got to connect to the south. We can't connect to the south if there's, if somebody delineates a wetland in the way of this, this ditch that used to be there. This ditch per our survey was, was 1.6 percent. It wasn't even flat. It was a straight grade line all the way to the bottom. So he's going to have an access issue, not being able to cross that, that ditch in this time. Timelines, I spoke on that, and what we don't want to have here is the construction is a temporary condition that's going to limit what the owner can do for development when, when the historical data is here between pictures and a delineation that was approved by, by Army Corps through three chances. A chance to follow up the project, I guess, is what we're requesting. So I hope you take that into consideration and then have, I don't know if you have the power to at least not postpone it, but at least approve it contingent upon receiving approval from the variance committee.
Anything else?
No, I will answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
The town has approved this petition with conditions to allow the operation of a truck stop. The, that would be the exclusive land use. Deed restrict the one property to no further residential development, to have the, it's acceptable to have hours of operation 24/7. The truck stop facility will have parking for semi-truck type vehicles within a designated rest area, retail sales, and service of fuel and restaurant customers within the facility and grounds. The lighting is covered on the approved pans and should be adhered to. Obtain approval from Land and Water Resource Management regarding erosion control and stormwater management. Obtain approvals from Land and Water Resources Management regarding dealing with spills and fluids. The final CSM to capture the final septic field location, and the final CSM to capture the well location. Staff does have three concerns regarding this project. The first one, the wetland line has, they're using a wetland delineation for the highway project. The highway NI39 interchange has been totally redone, and they're using this delineation. As you can see on some of the delineation reports in your packet, they're very straight lines, and that, that causes alarm to us because the very straight lines, the wetlands don't go in a straight line. They, they curve in and out, and it greatly appears that the delineation report that they're using is not specific to this site. The, the second item, this proposal is in violation of the wetland regulations. The wetland regulations call for a 75-foot buffer. The paving on this proposed project goes within two to three feet of the wetland boundary. goes within two to three feet of the wetland boundary. So, they would need to obtain a variance of 70 to 73 feet. They need that relief granted by the Board of Adjustment for this project to be in compliance. The second concern that the staff has is with septic systems. There is an existing septic system. The drainage field is right here. That's proposed to be paved over. There's also for the existing building... This is the proposed building, but the existing building, the drainage field is in this location, which is to be paved over. So, the only way to provide sanitary service is with a holding tank. The Department of Health is going to have some concerns regarding holding tanks. There's also... The third item is traffic. This is the only inlet to the site. Major truck traffic. To get to the fueling stations to the north, as well as the parking, will need to go through this corridor here. It's approximately 35 feet long. So, you have trucks coming in, you have trucks leaving. There is also concern with stacking. The ordering station is right here. That only allows for a stacking of probably two cars. Once two cars are exceeded, it's going to cause a conflict here between eighteen-wheelers coming in, coming out, and people trying to get their food from the fast food. So, that was the third concern of our... Of this proposal. Staff is suggesting that it be postponed until such time as the variance is obtained from the Board of Adjustment. The sanitary system issues are addressed, and a potential shifting, or maybe widening, of that major pathway to facilitate the type of vehicles that are going to be in that location.
Almost postponed.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I just want to get some clarification on the difference of opinion between staff and petitioner on the wetland delineation. When I read the staff report, I was left with the impression that the existing wetland delineation may not include the entire site.
That is correct.
Okay. When I heard you describing it earlier, it sounded like you were saying that it was maybe more cursory or not.
It falls in straight lines. And it appears that what that delineation report was...
You're saying the Army Corps' wetland delineation are straight lines, not that the area of examination was...
Yeah. The delineation report, there's Highway N here, there's a roundabout. What they were going to do is provide a road here to come up to service the current BP station. They found wetlands all over the place here. So, they crossed that out. So, that's what the report was used for. So, it wasn't for, like, specific site development. It was for this large road project.
The image the petitioner provided here was showing standing water. I'm assuming that standing water became... Was the result of construction and so forth. It's not... So, that the wetland delineation wouldn't necessarily say this is wetland. It's going to be... Because they'll be taking soil cores and so forth.
We're not concerned about that area. What we're concerned about is the wooded area behind that drainage ditch. It's very low, and it matches the same elevation that the same elevation that the wetlands are on goes into that property significantly, where it is in the trees there.
And then, as far as getting... So, even if we were to approve this tonight, they would need a variance.
That's correct. Currently, it's in violation.
And just try and make everything clear for everybody here that, one, this image of standing water isn't necessarily going to be declared... That existence of the standing water there doesn't mean this is going to be declared wetland. Two, Board of Adjustments, to make a decision on variance, they need a clear delineation, so we don't exaggerate what the thing...
They have an option to accept this delineation and then grant relief from that line for this project to occur. But that's... It's quite a significant variance request.
And then, on the septic field issue that's to be... Existing one that's to be paved over, that's the one in your staff report that describes that affects the neighboring property?
Yes, that's correct.
And, okay. It wasn't... And I guess, maybe I missed it in the staff report. I realize that means... I... And by those town conditions, it sounded like the drain field is going to be relocated, not that an entirely different form of... You said it's a holding tank.
Correct. That drain field's going to... The existing one for the parcel to the south is going to try to be relocated. They're working through those soil tests for that to see if it's possible.
Okay. And the...
If it's not, then we have to go to a holding tank.
And then, the... Where is the proposed building going to drain to?
The proposed building is designed to go to a holding tank.
Okay. So, it does not have a drainage field?
That thing to the north was the stormwater facility.
So, then, so we're talking two different septic issues. One, for neighboring property owner, drain field's going to remove if soil tests bear that out. And that can be done, otherwise they'll have to be a holding tank as well. But for this proposed development, it's also going to be a holding tank.
Correct.
And you're saying which of those would be... Might be of concern to public health?
Both concerns to public health.
Could you put up the map? It's under the CUP. That shows the hydroslabs.
So, in the time of postponements, can that issue around concerns about septic be worked out with public health?
It would just be contingent upon receiving that approval, right?
Another thing, too. I'm Paul Bardwaj, I'm the owner of the property. Do you think... You're going to shut my... Our access right now on the 23rd. There's no exception. Period, they're going to shut it down. So, what they're telling us is for the temporary access, you can cross that ditch you were talking about, the wetland. Well, I can't cross that. I can't put a road through it temporarily if I don't get the blessing from Dade County.
Well, there has been issues that we've been discussing for over three months regarding wetlands and packing too much development onto this site. We also made it quite clear that the... There is a 75-foot wetland buffer from the wetlands. And that has yet to be even discussed by the Board of Adjustment. So, there are some serious concerns here with the development of this site, especially with the wetlands that the Board of Adjustment should address prior to the committee taking action on this petition.
I mean, what needs to be considered here is that the existing...
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that... Time for public health, so we're... We're in committee deliberation.
If you'd just wait till we call on you. Thank you, Supervisor Meton. Anything else? Any questions for staff or the petitioner? Okay. It's not projecting as clear as it is on ours, but...
I did put a call in to the county board office to get a new projection.
Okay. Just, you know, understand. I understand your challenges and dates, but if this was clearly... You're aware of it. There's wetlands. So, when we see a big area of wetland on a petition, it has to be addressed. So, I have great sympathy for the dates that you're trying to meet, but they don't supersede the issue of there's wetlands that have to be addressed.
So, what the... I had a conversation with the DOT today, and they said whenever they do a project, they have to vet out everything that's going to be disturbed. So, they... He had indicated that the delineator would have looked at the entire corridor, and what they've deemed wetlands popped up as wetlands. So, the furthest point in on that ditch would be the point that we're talking about. That would be an approved wetland delineation that was done three times through three addendums by the Army Corps. So, what we're asking for now is above and beyond a five-year window. We're asking to do a delineation to round out a triangle within a ditch, when you could round that triangle out and still hit that maximum point. And in regards to the wetland setback, I mean, we'll get into that with the variance, but, you know, DNR allows you to build right up to it, and we're taking everything, and we're treating it through filters. Right now, nothing's being treated at the site, the existing site to the east. So, it'll be a better situation in the end. The real problem is, is if we got to do a delineator, they're going to call this a wetland all day. What you've seen in that picture will be a wetland all day. They don't care that it was disturbed or whatever. It's going to be a wetland. Then you're going to have DOT's plans filling in those ditches, okay? Because they're extending the roadway. You're going to have hay bales in there, which is technically a fill to treat for the erosion from the site. So, if we can accept delineation as it is, then we can just round out that ditch on the inside and call it a day.
Roger, would you state again the steps required that you're recommending?
Yes. Recommending that it be postponed until such time as relief is granted from the Board of Adjustment for the 75-foot setback from wetland. Right now, yes, they're in the general area, but still, they're five feet away from it. Our county ordinance is, say, 75 feet away. The second item is addressing the sanitary issues that the holding tanks are acceptable to Dane County Madison Sanitarium. And the third item is to look at the vehicular conflict on the west side of the building.
And we already had a motion and a second to postpone based on those concerns. Further discussion on the motion to postpone. Seeing none, all in favor of postponement, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the postponement?
No.
It's postponed.
Can I say something?
No. No, we're done. I'm sorry, did you register?
No, I did not register, but I've owned this land for almost 35 years, for almost 40 years before selling it to Paul. And I'd like to see somebody come down and inspect it for wetlands, because I've had a 300-foot sewer drainage on that land, and it's all gravel. I have never seen water stand on that land where they've got marked with "wetlands". My big concern is Frank and Kevin Knipper has got an easement over on the land for his septic system, which drains good, for his septic line. And I would like to... If they're going to move his septic system, I would like a written statement from him okaying it, so I'm not responsible for that.
Okay. Roger's nodding his head.
Wetlands, you're way off on a wetland. There is wetlands way to the... To the north side, I guess, but...
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. And if you would have a chance to fill it for him, it'd be great. So, we know we are, and we have your testimony. And we also have the... CUP, thanks. And so, we have the motion and the second to postpone on the CUP as well. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the CUP is also postponed. Moving on to rezone petition 11,195 in the town of Albion.
Evening.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. I'm Bob Deske, Chairman of the town of Albion. And this parcel of land that we're asking for the rezone at one time had a truck and trailer transport business on it. When that disbanded, we purchased the property thinking of town buildings. Since that time, we've changed our mind to do that in another area. And so, we put this out for bids. A gentleman on my right was the high bidder and plans to put some dry storage buildings back there for his concrete business. And we would ask that that be rezoned to C2. It was at one time zoned to C1. And then, when we took it during a blanket rezon, it went back to A1, actually, A1, I guess. So, we are requesting to accommodate the new purchaser of this piece of property, and also, we'll put it back on a tax roll.
Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? I do... Are you guaranteed to? And did you want to say anything? Okay, great. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger.
The town of Albion has approved this with conditions that the uses be limited to a concrete business and storage rental units. Staff is suggesting prior to the... Oh, the staff is suggesting that need restriction on the property to limit the commercial uses to concrete business and mini warehouse. Limit hours of operation of the concrete business to 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Limit the hours of mini warehouse from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Outdoor storage of equipment and material shall be behind existing buildings or otherwise screened from view, and prohibit the installation of off-premise advertising signs, given the fact that it's in close proximity to I-39.
Supervisor Ballack.
Yes. Are you in agreement with the conditions that you just heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve with the town and staff conditions.
Second. So, we have a motion and a second to approve with the town and staff conditions. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Next is a CUP petition 02388, Christine Bosher, San Tana Burke.
Good evening. Paul Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. The parcel in question is currently an inactive mineral extraction quarry, and we are seeking a conditional use permit for the purpose of accepting clean fill for the property so that we can begin and continue reclamation project that we have going on there in order to bring the quarry into compliance with the reclamation plan. The duration of the conditional use permit that we're seeking is 10 years, and the conditions that are set forth in your staff report, we agree with all of them, and the additional condition that the town of Burke put out.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger. Roger?
The town of Burke has approved this with the conditions as presented in the staff report. There is one issue, whether the expiration of this conditional use permit, rather five years or 10 years. The town has accepted the 10-year, staff, in the staff report is shown as five years, so it's up to the committees. I just wanna get that accurate.
Yeah, but the word 10 written, and then perhaps 5.
Okay, well-
I'd like to make a motion to amend the staff report to reflect 10 years all the way through.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll second that.
So, sir, the motion to approve-
Yeah, do you want a motion to approve with the-
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the CUP with understanding it's 10 years. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, CUP 2,309. That's to Staverius in the town of Springdale.
Good evening. Nathan Ward, on behalf of the applicant. Application for, he was for a 135-foot monopole communications tower by Central States Tower with their initial and anchor tenant being Verizon Wireless. Just in a short recap, we have your third-party's independent consultant's engineering report that does substantiate need for the site, places seven conditions thereon which we are willing to abide by, and also review of staff report and their 21 conditions, also willing to abide by those as well. We do feel that the application meets the guidelines of Dane County with respect to telecommunications facilities, as well as that of the state statute. We have attended a pre-planning application meeting with the town of Springdale and two planning commission meetings, both of which have been tabled. They have requested additional information from us with respect to two commercial properties in the northern portion of our search ring, and whether or not we had pursued those at the time we were investigating sites. We are currently still researching that information, and have been willing to grant an extension to the town with respect to the 90-day rule regarding the communication statute, and would request the same of your board. After they have their opportunity, there are some folks from the town of Springdale here that wish to speak in opposition. If we could get some clarification from you on what our next steps would be, whether it would be the work session in a couple of weeks, or just how we would go about doing that. They have also expressed their willingness to hold a special session planning commission meeting in conjunction with their next regularly scheduled town board meeting on October 16th. And other than that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
And just to clarify, so you're Nathan Ward?
Correct.
And then also available for information, Michael Wong? You just, just if we have any questions? Okay, so neither four or against?
On four.
Four, okay. Also available for information, Rodney Carter? And you're the lawyer representing-
Verizon and Central States.
Okay.
That is Mr. Wong.
Okay, so you're here if we have any questions.
Yes.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, wishing to speak in opposition, Adrian Smith?
Good evening, Adrian Smith. I live at 2349 Springrose Road. It's the one directly kitty-corner, the rectangle-looking one. I lived there for approximately 10 years, raising kids that are 3, 9, and 11. And from my backyard, this tower is going to be less than 300 feet. In the application that they, I don't know if it was a cityscape one or to the county, they had me listed as the closest house at 460 feet, which is not correct. There's also, there's actually two neighbors that are even gonna be closer than my house, one of which is sitting behind me, the Zimmers. Before I get into the next, I know there's a lot of federal laws with cell towers, and it's the most frustrating thing I've ever gone through in my life. But I'm gonna go through them anyways, that there's six standards that the permit is supposed to consider, one being establishment will not be detrimental to endanger public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. We all know there's thousands of numerous studies saying that if you live close enough to cell towers, which, within 1,000 feet, that the likelihood of cancer is three to four times the amount of anybody else. And we also know that we can't deny it on this, because they've had very good lobbyists, and so they have a law saying, you know, we can't touch that, but I have to say it. This is gonna be right in the middle of five houses that are gonna be within 1,000 feet, and we live in a rural area. Nathan has considered talking to the other commercial properties that are to the, are north of our property, but there's also other farm fields that have the same height that they're looking for that be, could be considered. And then going on to the number three, as far as the standards for conditional permit, the establishment will not impede development and improvement of the surrounding property. There are also, if you talk to realtors, which I have, one's a very close friend of mine, and another one that I just called, I first webber, they, cell towers, if you live within, like I said, that 1,000 feet of a cell tower, it can bring your property value down 20%, which is a very big number. The property owner doesn't live here, she lives in Platteville. It's a very rundown, old farm that, there's a, to really wanna put it, the building is, has completely fallen in. There's cars scattered throughout the property, so they could care less what's on its property. It is a high, it sits on a high hill, so I'm sure Verizon saw that the landowner was not in the area, they're in Platteville. I mean, it's a rundown property, it was probably the perfect scenario for them, except the fact that it's immediately behind five houses. And like I stated before, I have three young children that I can't imagine raising under 135-foot cell tower. Back to the cityscape, the third-party analysis, they, they said some of the missing and incomplete information was that they didn't provide photos from where the cell tower is gonna be. I have a very good feeling they didn't provide those photos, 'cause you would've seen just how close as our houses are. And the last thing, if, which I know is a very good possibility, is that if we can't stop this, that we at least do something as far as landscape or something to soften it a little bit. I mean, it's, like I said, I know, me being here, and they, all the laws are skewed in their favor, which is way, way beyond any of us, and, but it has to be said. I mean, this is not right. I mean, it's right behind five houses. It just seemed like there's so many better places that it could go, especially in a rural setting like this, so.
Thank you for your time. Also, registered in opposition, Theodora, Theodore and Diane Smith, just, you did wanna speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Theodore, and this is my wife, Diane, and yes, we are in opposition to this tower. We've lived, pardon, oh, we lived at 2361 Springrose Road, and of course, we've been there for 42 years. We've been there. And, and the big concern that, that we have is that, that was my son that was just up here, but like you said, he has three kids, and this tower going up is that close to our home, and we don't know what effect that's gonna have on these kids growing up. I don't know if Verizon did a lot of study on, you know, what effect that these have on, these towers have on the individuals, but I'm sure that it can't be good. And so that's, and that's why we're here opposing this, this tower, because we are so close to it.
We live next to our son, and the children do play in the backyard a lot, which is, you know, less than football field away, and I have a vegetable garden, too, that's very close. And then the Zimmers that are even closer, they have a vegetable garden, and they're in their backyard a lot, which is the property that's even closer than ours. So, you know, I have a problem with the, it said it isn't supposed to impair the enjoyment of our property and the neighbors, but if it, it just, it borders on our backyards, so it's certainly going to impair the enjoyment of our properties and their use of our backyards. And like, it's been noted, there are commercial areas in the area, and a lot of, you know, agricultural area, and again, the property owner doesn't live there, and it is very rundown, and it's notable that the location is the most feasible for Verizon, it's the highest point coming out of Madison, the highest point. So we hope that all this will be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also wishing to speak in opposition, John and Melanie Zimmer.
My name is Melanie Zimmer, I'm here with my husband, John, and we are in opposition of the cell tower in this particular location. We had also attended the town board meetings, and at one of them, they had talked about having gone down to the corner where Dish Auto's on one side, Maple Leaf is on the other end, and said that they had checked with them. Now, I know that they are saying that they need to check again, but we had talked to Roger Dish two weeks ago, and he said, never heard anything about it. They wanna put it up in my shop, he lives above his shop, it's an auto repair place, and he takes junk towed cars there. He said they can put it up there, and that, I would be fine with that. I think, you know, as Adrian and Diane pointed out, this is a rural area, but we do have a cluster of homes, and most, most of those homes were built by, this is their Bakken family, they, they put those there to live in themselves. That row of pine trees that you see, or that's dark, I think that access road is gonna cut right, right on the other side of our property, and I'm concerned that it's gonna take down some trees to the border there. As they pointed out, I love all of our neighbors dearly, with the exception of Betty Staverius. She doesn't live there, the place is rundown, that pig barn burnt down in 1988, it's rusting hull sits there. It is, she has never lived there, she never will live there, and it really, I think, will impact our enjoyment of our home. So again, we are in opposition. We think there are other suitable locations that wouldn't have so much of an impact.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Mr. Ward, you have three minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, I did just take a couple of notes. As part of the packet, we generally show the nearest residents to the proposed tower site. We do so using Google Earth aerial imagery, and it was essentially my oversight. This is the gentleman's home that I measured to, the distance from the corner of his residence to the tower site is roughly 460 feet, plus or minus. The home that's actually closest is within this grove of trees, it was not visible on the aerial imagery. So in doing some additional research, I was able to determine roughly the distance at approximately 413 feet to the corner of that house. So that was simply an oversight, I couldn't see it for the trees. With respect to the photos, the third-party consultant, when he reviewed the packet, was not aware that there has been some negotiation mitigation between Dane County and Verizon Wireless as to the application materials that were allowed to submit under the statute. And what's in the packet in lieu of that is essentially Google Earth street view images with essentially where the tower would be from that vantage point. So we're not allowed under the statute to submit photo simulations, they just weren't aware of them. There were some other items that the third-party consultant had requested that we did supply, both to the county and to the town, as supplemental materials to the application. The additional investigation that we're doing, going back to whether or not the commercial properties were approached at the time the initial research was done, I was not the original agent when this project was started, so I'm still in contact with that individual, trying to gather that information. I did take the time today to go with those two properties, I did speak with Roger Dish, he did state again that he was not approached back in early 2016. The thing that I found ironic was that he recounted the conversation that the agent told me that he had with Roger, primarily with respect to his business and the fact that he's been approached by the state of Wisconsin, they're gonna widen that highway at some point. So he's gonna lose acres on the north side, they're gonna be adding a frontage road in that location, and they've told him that they will be looking to purchase land as soon as 2020. So he's uncertain how much property he's even going to have left, and his current use of the property, he's looking to add both horses and cattle to his pasture. So between the two of us, we weren't really certain that there was a location that would be appropriate for the tower site, and he was also then concerned about his immediate neighbor to the south, who was in attendance at last night's town planning commission meeting, who very candidly said if we moved the tower up there, then he's going to be the closest neighbor, and how is that going to affect him? So generally speaking, we've tried to do what we feel is our due diligence in finding a site that meets the county code, that meets the state statute, and I've been doing this 21 years, and I know that if we pick a different location, we're gonna be back in front of you with a different set of neighbors that have the same concerns that we're discussing today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger?
The town of Springdale has not taken action on this conditional use permit yet. Staff is suggesting postponement with the acceptance of the offer Mr. Ward has offered with the extension, the 90-day extension.
I'll move postponement pending town action. I think I still need to accept the extension of the 90 days, and recognition of the 90-day extension.
Just for clarification, it's not a 90-day extension, it's the extension of the 90-day period.
Yes.
Right, so it doesn't have to be done in 90 days, it's, it'll be done when it's done?
So it's just extended now, not any designated number of days beyond the 90 days?
Yes, and I, and what I, what we were trying to do is, last night at the town meeting, we were trying to anticipate, if they're to have a special meeting on the 16th of October, and then it would come back to county, we were trying to anticipate what the date of that next meeting would be after the 16th of October.
And I'll ask a question. Roger, in the email that you and Madge sent out, there was some descriptions as to your actions tonight. It made reference to a work committee meeting, is that, I'm not familiar with that, but is there the opportunity?
So our, our meetings, we have a public meeting, and we have a work meeting. So at the public meetings, we, we take testimony, at the work meeting, we only, if we choose to call on you, but otherwise, it's a work meeting between us.
Okay. So then, we would come for that meeting whether we're called upon or not in two weeks?
Only if you're on the schedule.
Only if we're on the schedule.
Yeah, because it's not worth putting you on the schedule.
As soon as the town takes action, the very next committee meeting will be placed on the agenda. on the agenda.
Do you need to have town action report the Thursday before?
That is correct. So we're looking at probably the fourth Tuesday in October, whatever that is.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
I move a postponement.
And, um, extension beyond the ninety days?
Right.
Okay. Was there a second?
Nice. I think I did.
Okay.
I've got Miles and Matano.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Can't hear you tell me where I've been.
There you go. Any further discussion on postponement? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And it's postponed. The next petition noted has been withdrawn and then the CUP did do that with rezone?
Uh, no, this is a different location.
Okay, thank you.
This is the, uh, the Public Works Garage.
Do, anyway, okay. We have CUP zero-two-three-nine-two, it's the garage associated with, uh, earlier petition. Did you wanna add anything? Come on up. Thank you.
Once again, this is a parcel that we own. It is adjacent to our existing town garage and salt shed behind it. We wish to construct a cold storage building there to put equipment in for the township.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
Uh, the town of Albion has approved this conditional use permit with no conditions.
Move second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Next, conditional use permits, amendments from our previous meeting, CUP zero-two-three-eight-five, some period concrete, ink, in the town of Burke. Is that?
We've...
Yeah. Isn't that the one we've already approved?
No, this is the ones to the south.
Oh, okay. Thank you. It is different.
A companion to the other side of the existing quarry. Paul Johnson, again, we were here back at the July twenty-five meeting and had our public hearing. The town board has since, uh, the town of Burke board has since taken action. And just a reminder, we originally filed a request for a conditional use permit for a mineral extraction site and that was then modified to, uh, request, uh, a permit for clean fill only. So it's the same situation as I spoke about a couple of minutes ago. And we are again requesting a ten-year permit and we do accept all of the staff recommendations along with the one additional recommendation that the town of Burke imposed.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Roger?
Um, the town of Burke has approved this with conditions. Uh, staff is suggesting amendment to one of the conditions to have the ten-year timeline.
I'll move approval with the staff recommended twenty conditions. Looks like condition four, um, needs to be changed to ten years. It's again, ten, written form, five, and four.
I'll second one.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions, including its ten years. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's approved.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Plats and certified survey maps. Cherrywood Ridge.
Yeah, that one, uh, should not, should, should be on the agenda.
Oh, that's the one you wanted on. Maple Ridge.
Yep. This is a final plat located in the village of Mount Horb, uh, before you for a certification of non-objection. As you can see from the aerial map, this is kind of the last piece to the missing puzzle. Outlet one is being dedicated to the public for recreational purposes in stormwater. Highway one fifty-one is to the south and there are drainage arrows shown on this plat as well.
I'll move that we do not object.
We have a motion and a second, uh, certification of non-objection. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to tumble down front.
Yep. This is a preliminary plat before you, just for acceptance and, uh, scheduled for future consideration. Consists of forty-one residential lots with six outlots, a little over fifty acres. Current zoning is A-one, there is no rezoning petition associated with this. Kurt Cordell has already, uh, looked at this with regards to the comprehensive plan. Um, and I've just got some standard notes, uh, or conditions, uh, my preliminary review. Outlets three, four, five, and six, this is kind of typical with the town of Milton, do not meet the minimum frontage requirements along the public road. As before, we've done in the past, it's committed discretion. Discretion with regards to requiring a waiver or simply adding a note to the plat prohibiting any type of development. Outlets five and six will be dedicated as easements for public trail, recreational trail. Um, and then the other conditions will just stand. But like I said, this is just for acceptance and scheduled for future consideration. So most likely you'll see it in two weeks.
I'll move that subject for, uh, yeah, scheduling.
I'll, I'll second. I have a question. And I was just gonna ask, there's a, a bulb, kind of a bulb out towards the west. What's up with that? When's there a, looks like a stinkin' egg or mouse.
Yeah, so you have Ox Trail Way that's being extended. What I have seen in the past, and I don't know exactly for sure, I'll, I'll get clarification from the surveyor, is, uh, simply kind of a roundabout located within that bulb to slow traffic down. But I don't know that for sure. But I have seen that in the past.
It, it sort of looked like a cul-de-sac that got extended and then...
Yeah, also two on each side of that bulb is the outlot six and five, and that's kind of where that public trail easement is gonna be running through.
Oh.
So I wonder if there's gonna be kind of a, a minor intersection, so to speak, with pedestrians and traffic.
Right. Some, some kind of island in the middle.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay. On the motion to, what are we doing, like, accepting? And second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And we accept it. Spruce Valley.
Spruce Valley. This is before you for, uh, execution of the final plat in consideration of the March fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen conditional approval. Uh, this is located in the town of Milton, section twenty-nine. This consists of ten residential lots with three outlots, a little over fifteen acres. Yeah, there's really, really isn't much to add. There was a certified survey map that was part of the condition of this plat that has been recorded, which extends Fallen Oak Drive and is, uh, being dedicated to the public. So that's all taken care of as well, so.
So conditional approval?
No, this is for signature of the final plat before it can be recorded.
I move that we sign the final plat.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to sign the final plat. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I'll sign. Uh, we actually have Peter Kurt on, um, zero-three-three, Manhard Certified Survey Map.
Yes, I'm, uh, Peter Kurt, the personal rep for the Kurt Manhard estate here and, uh, I guess I'm claiming the hardship form here and, um, looking for the committee to review or either amend or change the, uh, highway commission's, uh, attachment to my rezoning As it stands now, what they were asking, um, for sixty feet of dedication along the hall, approximately fourteen hundred feet of, uh, road frontage I have there, um, it would make the house that's along the road non-conforming if it went to sixty feet there. And also, I guess, I guess, I just need to know, is that standard procedure for the highway department to ask people to dedicate their land rather than, um, buy it from you if they want it? I guess is what I'm saying. I mean, I've talked to the highway, deputy highway commissioner and my surveyor has talked to her too and tried to get some changes and couldn't get her to, uh, change anything at first anyway. Not only would, and would I be losing approximately an acre of land, close to an acre of land across the hall frontage with the extra, uh, land that the highway department wants, the biggest concern for me is that the house there, which my son wants to buy, um, he, I originally tried to sell it with the hall thirty acres and the two houses that are on there for about a year. I found out that wasn't gonna work, so then I had the certified survey done and that, that one lot parceled off so that my son could buy that lot. Well, now, if this goes through as it is now, that becomes non-conforming, that house loses value. If there was a fire or a tornado, you, I wouldn't be able to rebuild on that spot because it's a non-conforming lot. As it sits there now at the sixty feet, do you have a, Dan, do you have that other sheet there that shows where that would come across?
Should be in there.
On the, yeah.
So I kind of projected where Pam is asking for the sixty feet.
There's a turnaround in the driveway there and it takes just about ninety percent of the turnaround and like, what is it, nineteen feet from the front of the house there where the, where the right-of-way would come.
That's...
And where that property sits there, across the road is, it's all vacant land over there. It's been that way for the last fifty years. It's like a field and then a hundred feet back, there's woods. And all along that edge on that, on the other side of the road, there's plenty of road for easement over there. I mean, that doesn't come into my, my hardship thing, but it just seemed to me that it would be easier to go across the road. There's, there's no houses on the other side of the road that it affects. On my side of the road, there's another house just down the way that would have the same non-conforming spot that I am in there. And then on the other side of the road, it goes all the way out to highway fifty-one if they were ever going to expand it. And I asked the highway commissioner, are there any plans now or in the future to widen the road there? And she said, not at this time. So there really are no plans to do anything right now. And I'm just in a, a spot here. If I don't accept that non-conforming front of that lot, then that house, you know, the value of it goes down and I don't even know if my son would wanna buy it then if it becomes non-conforming there. And I guess what I'm asking is, how do you, is this standard procedure, I guess is what I wanna know for the highway department to, to want people to dedicate land that they really don't have a, a plan to use that land anyway?
So how did you, how were you made aware of this?
How were you made aware of this? Denial, denial of approval?
Of the, uh, highway commission, my, my surveyor, after it got approved at the meeting, my surveyor, uh, said he got an email from, uh, Ms. Dunphy there.
So just to provide a little background, there was a rezone petition associated with this. There's no new development. I, I believe the proposed reason for the rezone was to separate the existing residents from the farmland.
Right. Just to get that one lot off.
So standard procedure is when I receive the certified survey map application from the surveyor, I will forward that off to the various entities that will have review or comment, you know, comments. And so one of the agencies involved is the county highway department, since it's adjacent to highway CB. And so I received comments back from Pam Dunphy. She really just had two, two conditions. Uh, no access should be designated along the frontage of county highway CB. Uh, there's a note references county highway C, so that might be just a grammatical error there. Uh, the right-of-way to be dedicated for a distance of sixty feet from the center line of county highway CB. So then I take those comments and I forward those off to the surveyor as well as the town of Burke, just to give them a heads up. I also, uh, you know, projected, you know, what the current map would look like sixty feet from the center line being dedicated in relation to the existing house. That is correct, would create a non-conforming situation. So I had told the applicant as well as the surveyor that there's really, you know, one of two things that can happen with at the committee level. You know, the committee could choose not to take any action and then therefore I would go forward with my letter stating that one of the conditions is, you know, lands to be dedicated sixty feet from the center line. Or the other possible scenario, and this doesn't happen very often, but where the committee will reduce, uh, the, the distance that is being requested by the county highway depart, department. So that's the second option, one of two. So that's kind of what I told the applicant is to kind of submit the application for the, for the variance slash waiver.
Well, often.
This is unfair and I like to deal with it there. If the county came to you and said, we wanna take sixty feet, which amounts to an acre, under the normal process, you would be given the opportunity to get an appraiser, the county would get an appraiser, figure out a value and then pay you. Because you're doing this and you're not putting another ingress or, uh, driveway or anything else into the area, you are not doing anything other than separating and making two tax parcels.
Right.
You being held hostage.
That's what I feel. I'm being strong-armed to tell you the truth.
Well, that's exactly the way I feel. And had there been, and I'll be real honest on this one, had there been plans for CB out to fifty-one from your property, on paper, possibly going to get done in nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, whatever, I would not be as, um, aggressive in try, in helping you as I would be if, if, if the plans for expansion of CB were on the books. They're not.
Right.
Number two, your property on the south side of your property would be as easy as your property would be to dedicate sixty or fifty.
Easier.
It would be easier and I agree with that. So I, I am, uh, I, I'm very upset about this. How long have you owned, how many acres do you have total?
There's, uh, like thirty-one. It's been in the family for seventy-some years.
All right.
And my mother passed away and...
I know the property. I drive by it every day.
There's two houses there. My son was renting the old house.
Yeah.
And now he wants to buy, it's the newer house, it's fifty years old, but it's the newer house and...
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we eliminate the highway department's request for a, um, portion of the land to be given to the county. What's the, are you...
Could we look to reduce it?
I'm going to eliminate it. I'm going to eliminate it and not make it part of a zoning, let's see how the vote goes, a zoning petition out of fairness to our, to our Dane County citizen. That's my motion.
All right. I'll, I'll second, um, I need to, I have some questions. I'm trying to understand this. Um, all right. So I guess I under, so I'm looking for staff to educate me a little bit here because I thought right away, right away for roads are sort of fixed and the road as, um, is constructed and so forth can meander within that right-of-way. So if this is saying we need sixty feet on one side of, on either side of the center line, well, shouldn't that right-of-way already been fixed for that sixty-six feet? So why are we talking about this now?
I don't know the exact answer to that, but you can, you'll notice that further to the northeast, the right-of-way is fifty... to the northeast, the right-of-way is 55 feet each side of center line. And then it comes back in 33 feet from center line with this regard, regarding this existing residence.
That's the house there, you know.
But no, you're correct. I mean, somewhere within the right-of-way, there's, obviously it's a two-lane road as, as we speak.
So in a sense, we're looking, we're working with maybe older standards of, of requirement for right-of-way, road right-of-way? Is that the situation?
A little bit, yes.
And, and depending on the classification of the, the road as far as speed limits and so forth, doesn't it change the width requirement for the right-of-way?
Uh, it's a Class B highway, as, you know, as far as the county highway goes. I don't know with regards to what the speed limit.
Would it, would it help any if I took a few pictures just to show you, give you a reference as to what we're talking here? This is the property in question, and this is where the right-of-way would come to if...
And you're saying the right-of-way, if it's absolutely needed, could shift the other direction more easily?
And this, this is across the road. This, this is like a field right up to the edge of the woods, all the way down to Highway 51 here. There's nothing except an old abandoned farm with buildings falling down. It's, it's been for sale in the past there. And, and...
So, so she's just saying it's too narrow, the right-of-way, the existing right-of-way, so it needs to be wider. This is opportunity to correct that situation. But it doesn't have to be from the existing center line. It could be the other direction to where there's no...
Right. The impression thing, right-of-way is 33 feet.
The only reason why she's making comment is because of this particular land division.
I understand, I understand that, but it, it seems a little arbitrary to say, because the center line is here, we're going to go 60 feet that way. Well, why not maybe go 10 feet one direction and, you know, 50 the other?
That, that kind of makes sense, somewhere down the road if they ever needed it too, I guess, you know, but, but there's, as she said, there's no plans.
And the opportunity isn't lost if we just don't accept the highway department's, I mean, well...
As, as staff, I would, I would like the committee to consider at least 33 feet from center line being dedicated, because that's the current situation.
Isn't it 35? No?
No, it's 33.
It's 33.
Always. 33 from center line.
So I think, at the, at the very minimum... Adding two feet.
What's that?
So now adding two feet on, on one side to make it...
No, the current, the current right-of-way is 33 feet from center line each side along the applicant's property.
Right.
So at the very minimum, it's part of my conditional approval with this two-lot certified survey map, I would at least, at least like to see 33 feet being dedicated from the center line. That's the bare minimum.
Bare minimum, I'm sorry, was what?
33 feet. Being dedicated to the public.
Which is what it is now.
It's not shown on the CSM, though, as being dedicated to the public. That's just the current.
Right now, it's a, a meets and bounds description with a permanent highway easement going across the property.
If it's 33, what does it impact, the road frontage?
Yeah. 33 is a typical road.
No, but I mean, what is, how does that impact the amount of road frontage you have?
It's what you have now.
Yeah.
It won't, in fact, doesn't change.
You won't see anything if it's at 33 feet today.
So there's one thing would change. That's what it is now. Right.
Nothing would change.
Right.
It basically turns the permanent highway easement currently there into a dedicated public right-of-way.
Okay. You're okay with that?
One other thing to put it in perspective, I tried to sell land with two houses for a year, and there was no highway commission asking for a right-of-way then. And then when we surveyed off the lot on the front there, then I think, to me, it seemed like the highway commission saw an opportunity to get some, some...
Well, they didn't see anything with the sale. They didn't see anything with the sale. They weren't even paying attention. But it was our action that brought it to now.
Right, and then they saw that and went, oh, okay, we can try and get this.
Supervisor, well often.
First of all, I'm going to apologize to you as a county supervisor for putting you through this, number one. But number two, I think Patrick's thought of 33 feet is not changing anything as far as your setback or your legal position. All we're doing is correcting the old meets and bounds right-of-way. Is that correct?
That's correct. You're turning a, a permanent highway easement into an area that's dedicated to the public.
Okay.
Okay, but that motion, I'm making that.
I'll second that and ask the petitioner if he's in agreement with that.
Yes.
Okay. Please. I, I agree with everything that's been said. It, it seems to me that the county staffer was looking at it as lines on the map, rather than...
Oh, absolutely. At, rather than... And, you know, again, if we were to address the issue of upgrading county, county CB at some time, there's a lot more moving parts to it than one lot. So this, and, and if this happened, the chances are it wouldn't end up, it would change the ownership, but you'd end up following a driveway that was owned to the, by the county instead of one that was owned by you. But the other question I had was, there's a right-of-way shown for Wisconsin Bell. Is that, how does that fit into the equation?
They've got a 16 and a half foot right-of-way grant to Wisconsin Bell. That's for most likely some type of a utility.
So that's just...
All of the easement.
That's just the light tower?
Yeah. Underground utility, yeah. I'm assuming the phone. That's what I'm guessing.
So that's the, so is that an easement or...
Yes. Yeah, the other, the other issue with this, too, is the septic tank is located, you know, fairly in close proximity to the rear of the, you know, building, building line of the house. With, you know, going forward would be, you know, 60 feet from the center line, it definitely would make the house non-conforming, and if you were to push that back, you know, to a current setbacks of a Class B highway, now you're redoing the septic system, so...
Okay, we have a motion.
33 feet.
33 feet, I mean, so, do you need anything else?
Along the entire...
Yeah.
1,400 feet there, we're saying.
Any other discussion? Saying none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just, if you'd give some feedback, if the county's going to be doing anything, should, they need to have a plan for that road?
I, you know, in all honesty, I have asked specifically over the years, and I've never received anything. I actually reached out to my counterparts in the surrounding counties a couple weeks ago and brought this specific example to them. And they all looked at me and they're all like, you know, our highway department has never asked for any dedication. So...
Thank you. Thank you for, this is unusual, so sorry you had to sit...
Thank you for understanding my situation.
And sorry you had to wait till almost the end here, but thanks for hanging in there. Thank you. And next is Wellington Trace.
Wellington Trace. This is before you for conditional approval. This is the final plat version, located in the town of Bristol. Consists of 33 lots, 40.2 acres. Pam Andrews has reviewed this with regard to the comprehensive plan. The public parkland appropriation requirements to be satisfied. There is no public parkland shown. Fees will be paid to the town of Bristol in lieu of, all public land dedications are to be clearly designated as dedicated to the public. Dane County Surveyor Dan Frick has looked at the proposed road names, and he is good with everything. Standard conditions of utility easements, and the street should be graded and serviced in accordance with plan specifications and requirements of the highway commissioner, as well as the town of Bristol. The city of Zimfury has waived their ETJ authority within this area. The town approval certificate shall include language accepting the public road dedication. And then road control and stormwater, all approvals must be attained prior to any land disturbing activities. And then the big one, which is shown on sheet two of the final plat, all basement foundations shall be at least two feet above the highest groundwater elevation, which is shown on this plat. And then just a, a minor correction that the approval certificate for the county shall properly reference the Dane County chair as Mary Coler.
Zoning chair.
I'll approve with the conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Onto the community of Bishop Spade, the Prairie and the Farm, phase five.
Yep. Town of Westport, section 32. This is a final plat. Consists of 86 residential lots with 16 outlots, 53 acres total. As far as current zoning, this is going to be handled by the city of Middleton through their ETZ. Their planned development district is what they've shown. Lots will be served by municipal sewer and water. The preliminary plat was approved conditionally on June 27, and also in addition, the waiver to allow for the planned unit development was approved at that time as well. Kurt Codel has found that this plat has no land use conflicts. The public parkland appropriation requirement is to be satisfied. Outlots 32, or outlot 32, 4.3 acres will be dedicated to the public for park purposes. And then also, I just added in there that there's a 100-foot bicycle easement shown running parallel to County Highway Ham on the final plat. Highway department has weighed in. 80-foot total right-of-way is to be dedicated for highway purposes. This is a little bit different situation since this is new development. County surveyor approval has been attained, and there are utility easements shown on the plat, and then the standard conditions with regards to road control and stormwater.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Approved. Nature's Cove.
Last but not least, Nature's Cove, located in the town of Middleton. This is consisting of 12 residential lots with 25 acres. And just to kind of, it's been a little while since we've seen this plat. The preliminary was approved back in February of 2015, and then the final version was approved October of 2015. So this is before you for execution of the conditional approval of the final plat and then signature before it can be recorded.
I'll move approval for signature. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Saying none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Report of certified survey maps.
Yeah, those are the ones within the last four, approximately four weeks that have been signed and delivered.
Very good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Boy, that was interesting.
That was an oddball.